I'd like to call this October the 18th meeting of the Cookeville City Council order, please. Can we have a roll call?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Mayor Sully.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
All present.
All right, thank you. If we could all rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Shipley, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No changes.
No changes. Seeing no changes, do we have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion by the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Brings us to the consent agenda. Items two and three of our agenda tonight. Item two is considered on second and final reading. Ordinance 071032 amending Title 14, Chapter 1 of the Cookeville Municipal Code to set compensation for the planning commission members. And item three, consider awarding bid for uniforms, water quality control department. Do we have any comments? Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Brings us to the old business portion of our meeting. Item four, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held October the 4th, 2007. Do we have a motion and a second to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
We have our motion and our second. Any comments from the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Brings us to our new business portion of the meeting. Item five, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance 071027 amending the Cookeville zoning code pertaining to Section 220 CN Neighborhood Commercial for the purpose of increasing the maximum square footage of developments from 10,000 to 15,000 square feet of total floor space. Sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, council members, the CN District is a mixed-use district intended for single-family and two-family residential developments and limited commercial and private service uses. Commercial and private service uses are required to be compatible in terms of scale and appearance with nearby residential developments. The maximum square footage of any individual development within the CN District is currently 10,000 square feet. The CN District is the most restrictive zoning district in which commercial uses are allowed, and it's the only district in which the appearance of structures can be regulated. The CN District was developed by the planning department and adopted by the city council when the zoning code was completely revised in 2000. A primary reason for the establishment of the district was the recognition of the lack of commercial property within the city and the expected trend of encroachment of commercial uses in or near residential areas. The CN District is intended to allow limited commercial uses to coexist with residential development while minimizing the negative impacts such uses may have on existing residential developments. When the comprehensive zoning changes were adopted in 2000, a few small areas of CN were created. Since 2000, no properties within the city have been rezoned to CN. The planning department and the planning commission are in agreement that the CN zoning is very underutilized. In a recent rezoning request before the planning commission, it was determined that CN zoning would be appropriate, but one of the proposed uses would exceed the maximum square footage allowed in the CN District. During the consideration of this recent rezoning request, the planning commission determined that more areas within the city should be considered for CN zoning, particularly areas currently zoned for heavier commercial uses adjacent to low-density residential areas. In fact, the planning commission has requested that the planning department complete a study of a large area along East 10th Street and North Washington Avenue to determine the feasibility of rezoning from CL, local commercial, to CN, and this study will be considered by the planning commission at their October meeting. To make the CN zoning more appropriate for larger areas in the city and to reduce the number of developments that would be made nonconforming in future areas that may be rezoned from heavier commercial districts to CN, the planning department and the planning commissioner have the opinion that the maximum square footage allowed for any development should be increased to 15,000 square feet. It is significant to note that this requirement applies per development or parcel, which means that a commercial development would be limited to a total of 15,000 square feet no matter the number of individual structures. The proposed amendment has been approved by the planning commission and is recommended by the planning department.
Do we have a motion and a second?
May be approved.
Second. Have our motion and our second. Discussion by the council.
I have one question. There was a letter sent to us about possibly tying the square footage to the size of the lot. Was that looked at at all?
No. No, but I did, I am familiar with the letter that you referred to about the square footage. Another thing about the CN is, it's a big difference, for example, with the CL, is that the maximum developable area of a lot is 35%. 35% of the developable percentage of the lot is the same as we have for our single-family residential districts. To go lower than 35% would be basically telling somebody, you can't use your property. 35% is basically the threshold, is our maximum threshold for the lowest portion of a lot that you could use for your structure.
Explain that one more time. As it is now, what are you saying?
The CN District right now is 35% is the most you can use of your, of the lot in terms of the developable area. Now, that includes the parking, that includes structures.
Okay.
35%. To go to 20% is suggested in that letter, that's half of what we allow in single-family districts. Our S20 district, you're allowed to occupy 35% of your lot, and to me, that's, doesn't make...
So to do that, you would almost have to waive the percentage and then just go strictly by the...
No, both apply. Both apply. You'd have to have a certain sized lot to be able to do 15,000 square feet.
Okay.
15,000 feet could still, still could not exceed the 35% of the lot that you could actually use. So they both apply.
Okay.
It depends on, all that plays into how large your track is. It also depends on the, whether the lot's one, two, or three stories. You can go multiple stories. All that counts towards your square footage.
Can I ask a question? All those screening requirements that were passed earlier this year, they apply to CN, do they not?
No, they apply to any commercial development that's over 5,000 square feet.
And the commercial neighborhood, neighborhood commercial, excuse me, that's, they will, we will dictate to the people how they build. For instance, we can say it needs to be brick on all sides.
Yes, that's, it's the only zone where we have control over the appearance and scale of structures that are built in there and have control to ensure that what's built blends in or is compatible with the adjoining areas. And this district is intended to be a mixed-use district. It's expected to have residential with commercial, but it's also intended that those uses can coexist with a minimal impact from the commercial use on the residential use.
Any further comments by the council?
I know personally, having served on the planning commission from 2002 to 2006, I know, James and I talked about this several years ago, that there were a lot of times where rezoning requests were made for CL where this probably would have fit, but we just, we weren't using it at the time as much, and the size, I think, kind of limited it a little bit. But the fear was that people come in with a grand idea and get its own CL, and then it was like opening the book to a whole host of things that weren't as pleasant as originally described. So I think it's fantastic moving forward in the planning of our city that we will know that these areas will be more restrictive in the future.
Can you think of several areas in the city that, where this 15,000 would be very appropriate, and so it's timely that we do this so that many areas can take advantage of this and using the CN?
Well, the first area that comes to mind is the area that the planning commission has directed the planning department to study, and that's along 10th Street and North Washington. At least a half a dozen structures in that location exceed that requirement.
I think it also knows that there's a lot of undeveloped property in those areas that we're currently studying, and having the type of architectural controls there that the CN District allows is a, is a good source for us as it relates to the buffering between the, the road and the residences that border those areas.
It's, you know, I think our, our problem of growth, it's a, it's a, it's a good and bad problem, I guess, but it's gonna, it is, it is happening. And as it does, I think, you know, as Councilman Williams said, this, this area is perfect because it's, that they're looking at, because you have residential off of both sides of it, but that road is bound to develop, you know, over the next 20 years, I would imagine, for sure. So I think this is really a, really a forward-looking thing that we're doing to help protect those
Any further comments? Any comments from the audience? Yes, sir. If you could come to the lectern and identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
My name is Russ Soucy. I'm the one who wrote the letter to all of you about the percentage value on the land or percentage of occupation. Mr. Mills is right when he says residential structures, including accessory structures, and this is from the CN zoning code, 220.7A, residential structures, including accessory structures, 35%. 227B says all other structures, including accessory structures, 50%. So I would assume that applies to commercial. So while in residential, you're restricting it to 35%, the code says 50% when it comes to commercial. And I would, I would, that's the way I would read this, interpret it. I'm not a lawyer. But anyway, it's, and I realize that 20% sounded like it was a relatively small number, but when you consider the amount of parking space you have to have for commercial buildings, when you consider the buffer zones that you have to have on both in the back and the sides and all over the place, when you try to squeeze a 15,000-square-foot building onto a little over an acre of land, the result is you've got a very, very crowded piece of property. And to me, it's not very attractive, and I really don't think it meets what, what your objectives would be. If someone wants to build a 15,000-square-foot building, let them buy 1.75 acres of land that'll fit on there. You'll have plenty of room for parking, you'll have plenty of room for all the buffer zones, and it will fit into the area. The way it is right now, I do not think it would fit. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, we're making a lot of assumptions here. The 15,000, we're not saying, you know, this is an acre track, this could be on a three-acre track, a five-acre track. That's the maximum you can build. And to say that it won't fit, you can put under the CL at 60%, which goes up to 50,000 square feet. We're not saying that, I mean, that's, using that logic, then you couldn't fit a 50,000-square-foot structure on a lot. It depends on how big the lot is, whether or not it will comply. The percentage, I believe, is appropriate for, for this, for this zone that we're proposing with the CN. We're not proposing to change that, and I believe the 15,000 square feet is also appropriate. Again, we're not saying that 15,000 square, a 15,000-square-foot building can be, be built on every lot that's on CN. You'll have to have enough land area to be able to do that.
We have other criteria in common.
And meet all the requirements, the buffers, the parking, and so forth. There's a lot of different factors that go into deciding whether or not a structure can fit on a lot.
Thank you. Any further comments from the, from the audience?
Nancy Perdue and I live in that neighborhood. I'd like you to consider that proposing a Walmart means 24-hour traffic in that area, and it's really residential, and I don't think we need a business that runs 24 hours on that lot. That's my concern, is 24 hours. My backyard, it backs up to Spanky's, and I'm not far from Vinny T's. And the dumpster comes, and the traffic comes, and the delivery truck comes, and we're going to have all of that, and they're going to want to come early because of school traffic. And so, I mean, three weeks ago, 4:22, the dumpster came to, I mean, the truck came to empty Spanky's dumpster. And I don't think people realize how much commercial traffic goes in and out of a commercial building, and that's still a residential area, and I think to have a 24-hour business is wrong.
Thank you. Any further comments from the audience? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Deborah Sam, and I, can I just ask a question first? I'm sorry, I didn't read the, how, what's the regulation on trees kept in lots as we go to, when a developer uses a CN?
There aren't any regulations about trees kept within the city. You're given a bonus for, and a reduction of the total numbers of trees you must provide if you retain, retain, retain trees, but you're not required to under any zone within the city.
Okay. Then, I just wanted to do a short quote from the Lorax. "I am the Lorax, I speak for the trees. I speak for the trees, the trees have no tongues. I'm asking you, sir, at the top of my lungs," he was very upset as he shouted and puffed, "what's that thing you made out of my truffle and tuft?" And just wanted to say, trees have value inherently, period. And I know you all got an email from Ms. Evans about her concerns about deforestation and the value of tree canopies and Cookeville becoming a heat island, and so I won't go over that again. But I just want to remind the council that entities like American Forest, who through science and studies have come up with a number that cities east of the Mississippi should, in their planning of growth, have a target of about, on average, 40% tree canopy to help provide clean air and clean water for their communities, and we know what clean, you know, hot topic, clean water is right now. And just that everyone that goes through that intersection in the afternoon now benefits from those trees. This particular thing specifically. I was walking on the far sidewalk in the afternoon yesterday, and the shade from those trees was all the way, went all the way across the street to the far sidewalk. Everyone, like, in that intersection waiting for the traffic light benefits from shades from those trees. So just something to keep in mind, that that makes life more pleasant for everybody. It's a gift. So, and that people have sung praise over tree shade and cursed the removal of it since biblical times, you know, Jonah. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
No, I appreciate both those comments. I think we need to also keep in mind what, what we're considering, this, this ordinance that we're considering right now, it doesn't pertain to any particular piece of property, it pertains to this, to this zone in general, so...
We're basically changing the requirements from the 10,000 to 15,000.
Just for the zone.
And, you know, I think all of us could agree that we, we understand the value of trees and certainly want to work towards that, and hopefully that, you know, we can have, have growth and protect our trees at the same time. Unfortunately, on private property, it's, it's the landowner's choice a lot of times, and we would gladly accept a donation of that property, but, that you're referring to, but I'm not sure that that's going to happen. But, you know, we're, we're well aware of those concerns, and I think that they're very legitimate concerns. I really appreciate what you had to say.
I had a chance to talk to many of you already, and as you know...
If you could identify yourselves.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Sully, I'm Monica O'Blen, I live on Washington Avenue.
Thank you.
And no trees do not have tongues, but our children do. We have many children that go to our middle school, Prescott. There's quite a bit of traffic there. When Mark Medley came over and Sonny Allen came over and talked to me about this issue, I told him the main concern is our traffic. We do have traffic there in the morning and in the afternoon. That needs to be considered, and due diligence needs to be shown, that we look at the traffic issues there. Greg Brown did do a study just recently, and there are 1,500 cars each day that pass on one side of Washington. That's a lot. That is one block away from where Walgreens plans on going. Do you know, yes, there are three commercial pieces of property. One is not even developed, and there's, your zoning board even said that the traffic was an issue. I have one more child that goes to Prescott. The high school is over in that area. James Mills has stated four different times, there will be a five-lane highway down Washington Avenue. That scares me. That should scare all of us. We should protect our historical areas of this town. Our forefathers, Cookeville is not that old, and we should really take that into consideration. And I really hope that we are very cautious over the decisions we make over wanting to make residential property into commercial property so easily when we already have a Walgreens here. What about the small businessmen here as well, or pharmacists that are already here? Is it going to bring new, is it going to bring more jobs here, or is it going to take away from some of the jobs that are already here? Is it going to put the pharmacist right down the street from us out of business? Yes, it will. Ms. Davis, your husband was a pharmacist here. There are businessmen here, you know, are we going to an industrial city? Is that what we want? Those are my, my main concerns, but also, protect our kids, that's first and foremost to be considered. And I really hope that each one of you will go down and sit at the Citizens Bank when schools start and see what the traffic is like, and see how, when people are going south, how they merge going south, and how quickly they try to pass each other up in front of Mark Medley's house, Nancy Forrester's house, and my house. It is not if, it is when someone will get killed there. That really needs to be considered. And a five-lane highway isn't the answer. Are we going to tear down, which church are we going to tear down to make a five-lane highway? And Mr. Mills, I mean, we're only giving him what we give him. If we get rid of Quarter J, we're having to use our inner-city roads. We have nowhere else to put our schools. I just want to know what the long-term plan is for our city. Are we going to put new schools on the south part of this town? But we're at gridlock. Mr. Mills will tell you, that is a very heavy traveled road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Again, I'd just like to...
This is the wrong item.
You're more than welcome to come up and make comments, but I, again...
We're on the wrong item.
We're, we're just discussing...
Making comments on the wrong item.
Yeah, yeah. But I think the next item is probably the one that will, will be more appropriate to these comments, if you can just hold, hold on just a second. Any further discussion on the changing of the square footage from 10,000 to 15,000 square feet in CN? Any comments from the council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. That brings us to item six, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading, ordinance 071028, rezoning 900 North Washington Avenue from RS10 Single Family Residential to CN Neighborhood Commercial at, and 990 North Washington Avenue from CL Local Commercial to CN Neighborhood Commercial. Sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, council members, the location of these properties is depicted on the screen. Here's an aerial view of the properties being considered and the surrounding area. The proposed rezoning was initiated at the request of Mr. Chris Dawson on behalf of property owners Martin Medley and L.A. Allen. The request submitted to the planning commission was to rezone the property owned by Medley and Allen at 900 North Washington Avenue from RS10 to CL Local Commercial. The property located at 990 North Washington Avenue, which is owned by Citizens Bank, is currently zoned as CL. The properties proposed for rezoning are contiguous with CL zoning to the north and east, with RS10 zoning to the south and west. The area consists of approximately 3.2 acres, including rights of way. The properties have street frontage on North Washington Avenue to the east, East 10th Street to the north, and East 9th Street to the south. North Washington Avenue, which is State Highway 136, is classified as a major arterial street. East 10th and East 9th Streets are classified as minor collector streets. The future land use plan indicates that the subject properties are best suited for either residential or local commercial purposes. The rezoning petition submitted to the planning commission indicated that the purpose of the rezoning was to allow the construction of a new facility for the Citizens Bank and to construct a Walgreens retail establishment. A preliminary site plan indicated that the parcel in which the bank is currently located would be combined with the parcel owned by Medley and Allen. The plan depicted that the bank would be relocated to the southern or 9th Street portion of the combined property with the Walgreens being located on the northern or East 10th Street portion. Shared access to East 10th Street and North Washington Avenue were proposed with no access to East 9th Street indicated. The site plan also indicated that the elevation of the proposed commercial development would be significantly lower than the adjacent residential properties to the east. The proposed rezoning was discussed at both the August and September meetings of the planning commission. At these meetings, a number of property owners spoke in opposition to the rezoning and expressed a number of concerns. The primary concerns mentioned were the potential negative impact on property values, increased traffic, commercial encroachment into a residential area, deforestation, and compliance with the screening and buffer yard requirements. Additional concerns discussed by the planning commission were potential traffic problems with access to the property from the southbound merge lane on North Washington Avenue, concerns about the architectural finish of all the faces of the proposed structures, and assurances that the property would be developed for the indicated purposes. Regarding traffic, engineers for the petition met with city officials, including Public Works Director Greg Brown and Dr. Roy Lutzenhizer. Dr. Lutzenhizer, as you may know, is a member of our planning commission, but he's also a transportation engineering professor at Tennessee Tech and has extensive experience in traffic issues. The general consensus of Mr. Brown and Dr. Lutzenhizer was that the proposed development would have minimal impact on traffic. They both were of the opinion that the shared access to the two properties further south than the current access off North Washington Avenue to Citizens Bank would actually be a safer situation than now exists. It was also observed that as the property is currently zoned, it could be subdivided into a number of residential lots with multiple driveways accessing North Washington Avenue. During the first and second week of September, the Public Works Department depiled traffic count data at the intersection of North Washington Avenue and East 10th Street. The average daily traffic count on North Washington, south of East 10th Street, was 15,500 cars per day. In 2005, TDOT had the average daily traffic count for this location at 15,480, and in 2006, the count was 14,133. While there's a large amount of traffic on North Washington Avenue, there does not appear to be a significant increase in the past two years. A concern mentioned at the August meeting of the planning commission, again, was the perceived unsafe traffic situation involving the southbound merge lane on North Washington Avenue. We reviewed the police reports, the accident reports for this area, and for 2007 up until September, there's been one accident, and no accidents occurred in 2006 that could be attributed to the merging design. It should also be noted that North Washington Avenue is a state highway, and any access points to it would have to be approved by TDOT and developed to their standards. Now, it is true that any development of these properties would require the removal of trees. This is the case for the property is rezoned or not. As stated earlier, the property is currently zoned could be subdivided into potentially four or five residential lots, and this kind of development would require the removal of many, if not most, of the trees. The zoning code has specific requirements for landscaping, screening, and buffering for commercial developments. There are no such requirements for single-family residential developments. There were concerns mentioned that the preliminary site plan submitted to the planning commission depicted a buffer yard width that would not comply with the requirements of the zoning code. This is not entirely accurate. The buffer yard depicted on the site plan can comply with the requirements if the adjoining The buffer yard depicted on the site plan can comply with the requirements if the adjoining property owners formally agree to it. If the adjoining property owners do not agree, then the 30-foot buffer yard requirement will have to be met or advanced would have to be approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And it needs to be stressed that the site plan submitted to the planning commission was preliminary. The site plan was not a condition of the zoning and the planning commission did not approve the site plan. In considering this rezoning and developing a recommendation, the planning department placed significant importance on the following questions. Does the rezoning comply with the future land use plans for the city? Does the proposed zoning conflict with how other properties in the vicinity are developed and zoned? Are the existing infrastructure and transportation network adequate for the proposed zoning? Are the land uses allowed under the current zoning appropriate for the property? And if not, what type of land use would be most appropriate for the property? What will be the impact on the surrounding area if the property is rezoned? And are the current requirements of the zoning code adequate to mitigate any negative impacts? It's the opinion of the planning department that the answers to these questions indicate that some form of commercial zoning is appropriate for this property. As previously noted, the original request submitted to the planning commission was to rezone from RS10 to CL. The consensus of the planning commission was that the property proposed for rezoning would be more popularly used for commercial uses, however, there were significant concerns about the CL district. The major concerns for the CL district were the lack of assurances that the proposed structures and uses would be compatible with the nearby residential areas, particularly if the property were to be developed for purposes other than indicated by the petitioner. It was the unanimous decision of the planning commission that CN Commercial Neighborhood zoning would be appropriate for the properties at 900 and 990 North Washington Avenue. As noted under the previous agenda item, the CN district is the most restrictive zoning district in which commercial uses are allowed, and it's the only district in which we can control the appearance of structures. It was unanimous decision of the planning commission, as I noted earlier, to also study a much larger area contiguous with this for rezoning from CL to CN. And again, this will be looked at at this month's meeting of the planning commission. In summation, the proposed rezoning has been approved by the planning commission and is recommended by the planning department.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. First, open up discussions by the council. Any comments?
I believe the CN zoning of this is the best situation possible. When I look at that map and I see that little piece of CL zoning, which means that if the Citizens Bank right this minute decided that they wanted to move away from there, what kind of businesses could go in to where that CL, that little bitty corner is, if they decided to vacate?
Can we give you a list?
I'd like for you to start because I know it's a huge list.
Well, it's, of course, used car sales, tattoo parlors, taverns, bars, drive-through restaurants, outdoor storage building sales, cabinet shops. There's a big list.
Right, it's a huge, CL is, it basically is anything that's commercial, correct?
Not quite, but it's not quite as wide open as CG, but it's just those lists, those uses.
It's one step down from CJ.
CG, yes, ma'am, it is.
Okay. And, you know, nobody guarantees that the Citizens Bank is going to be there forever.
No.
And prior to the Citizens Bank being there, it was a gas station.
Well, that's before my time, so.
Well, it was before my time too, but historically.
Wasn't before mine.
Yeah, Jim Shipley says it was a gas station.
Well, I'd like to point out that we're here to consider rezoning. The site plan, that's another issue. So, we are not here to say it's banks, doctors' offices, Walgreens, whatever. We're here to rezone. The next step, as I understand, the developers will go through the process of the site plan and have criteria they must meet to fit this particular size of property and fit the zone, CN zone. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that's very well put, and I think that's exactly the way the planning commission looked at it because there were no assurances and there are no assurances that it'll be developed as proposed by the petitioner. And, but again, the planning commission felt like that some type of commercial use was appropriate. The CN, as I stated, is very restrictive in the type of uses that can go there, and they felt comfortable with that, not with the types of uses that was to rezone to CL and it didn't develop as they're indicating. And the uses I mentioned, they were not in favor of that, but they did favor the CN zone.
And I think this rezoning, obviously, and you've already commented on this, this was originally requested to be a CL zone.
That's correct.
And as the planning commission looked at this, it kind of spurred our thinking to look at this entire area. And I think when we look at what can go on across the street under a current CL zone, we could think of many things that could go there in that area. And so, we looked at what, as representative of the council, planning commission, we looked at what would be in the best long-term interest. And I know we weighed so many different things, you know, some of the things were, Ms. Copeland even said, talked about traffic, and a couple of things she said I wanted to comment on. One is, you know, this is a state highway, you know, they're the ones that determine whether this road meets criteria or not, and so that's not up for us to determine. And also about the traffic there as far as the schools, the schools' locations are being determined by the school board. I know that James Mills and I have met with the school board, discussed a couple of options that we'd like to see from a traffic standpoint, but we're not the ones ultimately making that decision. But we have encouraged them not to go north of town for the very sake, there are some, it would introduce more traffic there. So, our relationship with the county is extremely good. We're trying to find other things to keep them from going north of town. So, as far as those concerned, you know, I have children too, I have a five-year-old and a three-and-a-half-year-old, and their safety is extremely important to me as well. And I, when we, as a planning commission, we looked at the full gambit of everything that was here, and we labored over this greatly. And we really feel like this is something that 20 years from now, we can look at, look back upon and feel that it was a good decision for this community. And it'd be as difficult as it is for some now, but we think, we thought, and that's why we unanimously decided to send this to the council tonight, which Sam could probably attest is very difficult to do sometimes.
It is, it is a tough thing to happen. And this is, you know, for me, just looking at this map here, this is a state highway, 136 is a state highway just like Highway 111, and it is designed for traffic. My grandmother actually used to use that road in a horse and buggy and come into town from their farm when it was dirt. And it has certainly changed since that time. We're going to continue to change. We're going to continue to grow. I don't think that we can stop that. And as a local business owner, somebody made the comment earlier about opening up the door to something that would compete against locally-owned businesses, and there's nothing I would enjoy more than passing an ordinance that would prevent any other outdoor stores from coming to Cookeville. But we can't do that. We have to remove ourselves emotionally a lot of times from these things. I would love to protect all the trees. I spend a great deal of my time in the outdoors, and trees are very important to me, and they are important to the city as far as the shade and as far as stormwater management and those sort of things. Our big park that we're hopefully going to develop across the street here is a way that we will hopefully plant more trees and hopefully slow down stormwater runoff in our city. But looking at where this lot is located, to me, geographically, it is just at a major intersection in our city, and to me, it's hard to justify why it would not go commercial. If you moved down south on that street to 7th or to 6th Street in the middle of a neighborhood that was surrounded by houses and came and asked if I thought the same, I would probably disagree. But there's already commercial on that corner, there's commercial on every corner in that, at that intersection. And certainly, to me, opening it up to CL was not a good idea because of the, because of the list of things that could go into your neighborhood. But by being able to make it work in a CN, although nobody wants commercial there and nobody wants to cut those trees down, and nobody wants the excess traffic, to me, it's the best-worst decision that could go there as far as protecting that area. And having traveled in several parts of the southeast, business and other reasons, you will find in a lot of very upscale neighborhoods, on the corner at an intersection, pharmacies and small businesses like this. And I don't think that it necessarily detracts from that neighborhood, and I think by putting in the CN is a way that, in my opinion, is going to help protect that neighborhood. And it's another point that's been brought up about traffic is that a lot of cities sprawl and you have development all over. And right now, if somebody wants to go to Walgreens, I mean, 24 hours is not convenient maybe to have a business in your neighborhood, but if you have a small child that's sick and you need to get medicine at midnight or 2:00 in the morning, 24-hour pharmacy is pretty convenient. And to have to drive across town is creating more traffic. If you can just drive to your neighborhood pharmacy or actually walk down there is even, reduces traffic even more. It's not, this is not an easy decision for me, and I think I can speak for the council, and we've labored over this considerably, and I think there's been several concerns that have been pointed out, and we've taken a look at all those things. And I certainly believe that, in my opinion, that CN can make this a desirable type of development that, in my opinion, I don't know how long of, and I don't even know if the Walgreens will even come. I mean, that's not why, you know, I think anything that comes there in that CN will have to meet this criteria and for probably 20 to 30 years, protect that neighborhood from anything worse that could come to that intersection. And so.
I think that's the point. You know, change is difficult anytime, especially when it's around our most prized asset, which most of us have, which is our home, a monetary asset anyway. And, you know, this is in one way, a way to protect the existing area around it, and that's what zoning is all about. And, you know, we try to make the best decisions possible, and sometimes people may not agree, and we may not always be right, but we do what we think is best for the long-term existence of Cookeville because Cookeville is changing. And one important point to make about Washington Avenue, you know, whether it someday is five-lanes or not, it will never be the decision of this city council or any other city council for that to ever happen. I know we've talked at length about roads, and the widening of Washington is not even, if you had the David Letterman Top 10 list, it's never been on the Top 10 list. It's never been talked about. Even if, even if one of us wanted to do that, we couldn't without the state doing it, deciding it, and proceeding with it. And it's just not something that, that is something you need, I say worry about, but I mean, but that's the truth because there are far more important connector roads and things in this city that need attention other than Washington Avenue. And, you know, Washington is a unique street. It's a beautiful street with beautiful homes and trees, and I'd love to see it stay that way for a long, long time, and hopefully it will. And hopefully, this will help protect the neighborhood and go up onto 10th Street like he's talking about because, you know, in the next 20 years, I think it's guaranteed that 10th Street will become a major artery into Cookeville the way Algett is growing. It's just, it's inevitable.
May I make one more comment? Think of this scenario. What if, what if this council did nothing and it was left like it is? And what if the developers sold that property to someone else, the owners of that property sold to someone else? And here we go, councils way ahead, two or three councils ahead in some years. You know, anything can happen to that with what Councilwoman Anderson pointed out, could be, lots of different businesses go there that might not be, in my opinion, protective of that neighborhood. So, I feel like this is our opportunity to do this protection for this neighborhood. And not only that particular one, but I'm hoping in the future that this process that the planning commission is taking on, this will, this will help a lot of those neighborhoods up that east on 10th Street. So, I feel like that it's our opportunity and our, actually, our responsibility to see that these neighborhoods are protected as best we can, and this is an opportunity to do it by changing this zone from CL to CN. Thank you.
Any further comments about the council?
One thing that I've noticed since I've been a councilperson is when I go out of Cookeville into other cities, other towns, other states, one of the things that I have noticed is the new development in new areas. For instance, I'm talking about Wilmington, North Carolina right now, that they are trying to do more CN development so that the neighborhoods can flow into the commercial without it being disruptive. And just recently, I read a tract about the fact that many new housing developers are trying to develop their communities around stores that are within walking distance. And you all, I'm sure, if you live anywhere in the middle of town and seen me, I walk everywhere. I walked a couple last nights just to two very bad places to get dessert and said that by walking, I was able to, you know, justify my ice cream. But I do walk all over Cookeville, Tennessee, and I appreciate the trees, the sidewalks, everything. And I think CN is a good solution to this.
Any further comments about the council? Seeing none, I'll, at this time, open up the floor to the audience. Again, if you have comments, please try to keep them to three minutes or less. And if we begin seeing a, if the person in front of you is saying basically the same thing that you are going to say, please come up and minimize your comments so that we're, reduce the redundancy there. But we still want to hear your comments, please.
Yeah.
Nancy Pardue. I'd like to back up to this map. Everybody's been saying neighborhood, neighborhood, neighborhood. Right here is green. This is neighborhood. As soon as this goes commercial, this is going to go commercial. This right now is neighborhood. Let's keep it residential, neighborhood. Residential because the school is right up there. We want residential houses next to that school.
Please come to the lectern there and you can just identify yourself and.
My name's Ted Hazelton. We live in our 28th address since we've been married. The last 23 of these have been in Cookeville. We've never lived in a place that's as community-oriented as Cookeville is. And let me just back up and say one comment here, that were these corners up here, if you could back the clock up and do what you're probably thinking about doing here, these would not, this is all parking lot up here. It's, you know, it's, it's trashy. It really is. And to have something come in that's going to be commercial, that is landscaped, as I understand it's going to be, well, I live right there, you know, right? That's our block up there. Nancy lives over here, so we're in the neighborhood. But I don't want to see this someday, maybe not in my lifetime, look like these things up here. Who knows what's going in here? End of comment.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
And I would just like to go ahead and come to the lectern. I'd just like to add that having looked at this, it would be my hope, and I think with the planning commission's idea of doing the CN down 10th Street, is that when you have a nice development go into an area, unlike something as Mr. Hazelton described, that maybe it will become a catalyst for further development of the same type. And so, you might actually begin to see better developments occur in these areas rather than, as shopping centers get old and they begin to decline, you know, it's not good for anybody's neighborhood. And so, hopefully, by this CN and, you know, positive development going on there, that it'll increase property values and increase the type of development that happens over there. Yes, sir.
Yeah. My name's Hugh Piercy. I see a lot of my friends that are in the environmental movement, they might not like me too much after I get finished. I, I'm a resident in the North End. I like, prefer to go to Walgreens to get my medicines. People say, well, you could go to Super D, but I don't want to go to Super D. So, as it is now, I have to go all the way down to Jackson and. So as it is now, I have to go all the way down to Jackson and Willow. And I don't drive. I take a bike. It'd be much better for me if there was a Walgreens or some other alternative in that area. And also, I think, as city councilman, you're all elected at large. You're supposed to look out for the interests of the whole community, not just one particular neighborhood. So I just ask that you do what's in the best interest of Cookeville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Briggs.
My name is Barbara Briggs, and I'm a resident of Hart Village. And I'm here to speak against the rezoning, at least of the property here. I have a lot of trouble getting out of my subdivision right now. And there are several places available very close to me. Instead of them going one block south, if they could go a few blocks east on 10th Street, where the old Exxon station is, it's still paved, the new CVS, there's another commercial across the street on the other side. I just feel like the bank could move down there, and you could have your Walmart and wouldn't have to do any rezoning until some of this other commercial property. I mean, if you fill this up, I'm still going to get those other places filled up. It's just going to get worse for me to get out. So I don't think it's necessary. I do feel like I wish the arrows were different on the traffic flow. I have had, I have been going west on 10th Street. I have been in the lane that goes straight ahead. I have had somebody in the right-hand turn left lane, should have turned, and gone straight ahead. It got into the bank there. And that's not good. And the racetrack's being made out of those places. Those people are just trying to beat each other out. And I really think it's your corner, if it could be, instead of that arrow going into merge, I think that arrow should go a right-hand turn and take them through your prop, and I don't want to increase your traffic either, Laura, but I think, you know, you can't get through 10th Street when the school's getting in session or out of session. So I wish that arrow would be changed also. So I don't, I don't see where the necessity is for it all to be rezoned. And I feel like, feel like there's a lot of commercial property out there, and it is getting worse. Y'all are dressing the stuff on 10th and Washington as best you can. So, and I feel for the property owners, too. I actually bet on the house that Mona's in. And had I been in that house and been a property owner, I wouldn't be happy with rezoning over there. I really wouldn't be. So I'm in a majority, and I think y'all have made up your mind, and you're doing the best job you can. That's wonderful.
Thank you. I wish we had our, I wish we had our public works director here with us tonight to address those traffic concerns at that intersection. But we have looked at that, I'm sure.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Osborne. And I'm here to speak against the proposed rezoning of the residential area between 9th and 10th Streets on North Washington. But in order to make my case, I'd like to first commend the city planners for their original vision of the neighborhood commercial zones, which restrict the size of commercial buildings to the scale of the houses in the area, require, excuse me, a certain number of trees to be left on developed properties in order to provide green space, and establish buffers between businesses and homes in the neighborhoods. This vision of development requires developers to think about how the elements of a neighborhood fit together. And it seeks to preserve a certain quality of life for residential areas, for what we call neighborhoods. This type of development is a progressive vision. It's one that allows for mixed-use zones while preserving the best qualities of a small town where people care for their neighbors. Indeed, the whole idea of neighborhood implies a collective vision for a community based on the good of the whole. A neighborhood is that true, that is a true community is a place where people's homes can be sites of refuge from traffic commerce and from the comings and goings of strangers. And that's what we think of when we think of traditional residential neighborhoods. But it appears to me that the plans for Walgreens and the expanded bank, as I have viewed them in their current stages, does away with all of that. It appears that these plans do not meet the goals of the neighborhood commercial zoning plan. It appears that this development will pave over all of this beautiful wooded lot, providing no buffers and no trees, and will not seek continuity with existing residences. Not only that, but it will subject nearby property owners to increased flooding and muddy yards from runoff and soil erosion resulting from paved services. In the end, the majority of property owners in this area will see their property values negatively affected and will lose their privacy, their peace and quiet, and their sense of community. I think that an organization perhaps that could be, meet more protective codes could buy this land, and the good of the many would triumph then over the interests of the few. A neighborhood business that would match the scale and the greenery of the area would return to the original vision of this neighborhood as a community. And when we act for the good of the community, we're living by the traditional values that Cookevillians have taken pride in for generations. I'm afraid of this rezoning. Please do not rezone this area unless you're willing to hold these businesses to the highest goals of this original vision. You've already changed the zoning to allow for a larger structure, and I'm afraid that further compromises then will be made that will compromise and detract from this original vision. I thank you all for your time and for your consideration.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the audience?
My name's Charlie Osborne. My wife's a hard act to follow.
Amen.
May I read a statement from another person that couldn't be here?
Sure.
Okay. This is from Michael Birdwell. "I'm concerned and dismayed about the proposed rezoning of the area between 9th and 10th Streets, North Washington. As someone who lives just off North Washington, I travel that congested road every day. The traffic worsens every morning and afternoon because of the school traffic between Prescott and High School, which will only continue to swell once Jerry Woodston reopens. Putting a Walgreens on that impossible busy street corner will only increase the amount of traffic accidents, but further endanger pedestrians who walk up and down Washington every day. Not only that, more congestion on that corner will create a negative impact on the ability of the first responders to deal with if emergencies. Equally alarming is the discussion to cut down the stand with trees on the opposite side of the road. That area should remain a greenway for citizens of Cookeville to enjoy, much in the same manner as the Capshaw Woods. In addition to their being aesthetically pleasing, they provide much-needed function of improving air quality and controlling erosion. There's nothing positive to gain from this project for the average citizen and visitor to Cookeville. There's nothing progressive or morally uplifting in this project, nor is there a need for it. It appears that few people have done their homework and dash headlong willy-nilly into an enterprise that will create more headaches, more delays, and more frustrations for the good people of Cookeville. Please reconsider these actions and act in the best interest of the majority rather than the pocketbooks of the few. Respectively, Michael Birdwell." Thank you.
James, do we have an ordinance that protects property, let's say residential property, if it's wooded and a landowner wants to deforest it? Is there any protection at all?
No, I mean, if you have a wooded lot, you can cut your trees off.
You can cut every one of them, I think.
I was going to say, the only, the historic zoning, Dixie's zoning...
Other some are.
That limits, that's the only thing I know of that they limit.
It's just the canopy trees along the street.
And it's just the canopy trees.
What we have, which I discussed this earlier, are landscaping and buffering requirements for commercial development. You are required to provide a certain number of trees that's based on your road frontage and how many parking spaces you provide. You're also required to provide a buffer between the commercial development and the residential development, and that can be accomplished through the planting of trees. The only way that trees, the only provision we have about the retaining trees are that you can trade off, if you save specimen trees, then we'll allow you to trade off versus the number of trees you'd be required to put in as part of your development. But to answer your question, if you want to cut all the trees off your lot right now, you can cut all the trees off your lot right now.
That's, you know, and I would encourage people not to do that, by the way. I planted over 500 trees on my property this year. I'd, you know, I'd be willing to challenge most people in here to see if you've planted more than I have this year. And believe me, it was the worst year in the history of our country, probably, to plant trees. The freeze killed about 80% of them, and the drought has killed the rest of them. I probably had about 10% survival this year. But my intent was to create a buffer between me and adjoining properties. And that was my choice to do that, and I planted those trees in hopes that they would grow into a forest one day and provide shade and habitat for wildlife. And may have to redo that again next year. It's sad that we can't control the trees, and we don't know for sure if this is going to be a Walgreens or a hobby store or whatever. That's, that's not something that we can decide on. What we can decide on is the zoning, and CL did not seem very appropriate. CN is much more restrictive and much more protective. It does have architectural standards. They will have to follow buffer, buffering requirements, is my understanding.
Yes, they will.
As we always do. And, again, you know, it's, it's not something, I wish that we will accept donation of that property to the city. If a group wants to buy that property and donate it to the city, I'm sure Mr. Shipley will accept it and protect it.
I sell it.
I always go back, this is a very difficult decision to be made. And it's, and if you have never attended a planning, the zoning board's meeting, you need to do that. These folks do not take these decisions lightly. They discuss it, they hash it, they discuss it some more, they bring it to us. And I feel very confident in Mr. Mills and his group of people that bring these things to us because they are very serious about what they do, and they are looking to the future. And here again, CN there will protect the neighborhood, in my opinion.
Further comments from the audience? Again, you know, is adding to what Councilwoman Anderson said, and what Mr. Mills said earlier, we're lucky that we have, and I don't think he's here this evening, he's probably discussed this to his limit, but Dr. Roy Lotzenheiser, who is a traffic specialist, I think is a great asset, as well as others, on the, on the planning commission. And I think that was initially one of the greatest concerns that all of us probably had was, was the traffic and the congestion out there. I passed that intersection most, most days. And it is, in the mornings during school traffic, and in the afternoons, it is a busy intersection. And they have looked at it and have come to, I mean, obviously, it's the state's decision, I guess, on where they come into the intersection there, but it hasn't been taken lightly. Yes, sir?
My name is Bill Bush, and I'm a concerned neighbor of this proposed development. And my question is, what is the long-term plan for North Washington Avenue, especially this area immediately south of the intersection? Is the plan to, is the commercial development going to stop at 9th Street? Or is the long-range plan to extend the commercial development more and more southward until it possibly meets up with the commercial development coming up from the square? Is the plan to widen Washington, North Washington Avenue below 10th Street with the result that as north of 10th Street, all that area has now become commercial? Also, with the 24-hour business, we will not only have the additional traffic and congestion, but that will be going on all night long with the traffic coming to the business. My personal feeling is that Cookeville does not need another drugstore, and it does not need another bank branch. And by allowing this property to change from residential to commercial, you're threatening the, possibly, the viability of the other residential area, which is a historical and charming and pleasant aspect of Cookeville, and one that should be protected. And that, I also feel that there are other commercial areas in the city that would be better suited for this purpose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mills, could you address just quickly the future developments?
Our future areas plan indicates that the entire area on Washington, from 9th down to the existing commercial development, would remain a single-family residential. As for the widening of Washington, I think y'all have spoken that that's not going to happen anytime soon, but I would, do want to point out that the traffic study, several traffic engineering studies have shown that within a few years, Washington Avenue will be operating at Level F, which means gridlock. And at some point in time, something will have to be done. If new roads aren't built, and I think you're already seeing this, traffic is not, is avoiding Washington. That's why we haven't seen an increase in traffic. It's, they're going down Maple, they're going down Jefferson. So at some point in time, and I'll tell you, I'm sure it won't be this council, but at some point in time, something will have to be done. And that is shown in our, in our long-range plans, that something will happen to Washington.
But I think it needs to be noted that that doesn't mean that something has to be done on Washington.
Oh, there are...
And I think, I think one of the challenges that the councils before me and other councils have had in the past is the ability to build new roads in our areas is extremely difficult. And so if we don't build new roads, then we put more traffic on the already existing roads that we have. And so what I'm hearing, what I hear you say, and I want to make sure we're clarifying it, is, is we have to look for opportunities to find ways, to find ways for people to get around Cookeville instead of through Cookeville, whether it means improving roads like Old Kentucky was improved or something like that. And it may not mean Washington, but it means we do need to make improvements to roads.
What he just said is the very reason that, whatever you want to call it, the northern connector, the economic development quarter, whatever you want to call that, was looked at on the beginning and has been looked at repeatedly over time, is, is to circle or ring around Cookeville to alleviate congestion within town. Now, if you're a business owner, do you want traffic going around you? Probably not. But, so, it's, it's a give and take, no matter what. But to alleviate congestion, that was the whole purpose of that proposed road, was to, to circle around and get from point A to point B without going through the middle of town. Again, you know, there's no right or wrong answer of whether you're for it or against it, that's okay. But there are reasons for it, and at some point, it may have to be looked at again. As, as negative as it was because of the environmental concerns and others, this is the very reason for looking at it.
I think you'll see in any community that's growing, like Cookeville's growing, not, this isn't, we're not unique in this. This is, every other city across the country that's growing has an increase in traffic. And you're, you know, you're going to have traffic through residential areas. It's just, people seek the fastest route to get from point A to point B. And, I mean, there's, it's just growing pains is what a lot of that is.
And unfortunately, because we're, I think it's 60,000 is the threshold, we don't have a population of 60,000 people, we can't qualify to receive any federal money for mass transportation in our community. So economists will tell us that although we have 26,000, 28,000 people living as residents in Cookeville, that on any given day, there's somewhere between 70,000 and 100,000 people in Cookeville. But we don't get to qualify them to get the mass transit money to run bus lines and those sort of things, so. Any further discussion? Any comments, further comments by the audience? Any further comments by the council? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Obvious opposed motion carries.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mills. And thank you all for your comments. Item seven, consider authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Laurel Court, excuse me, with Laurel Creek Incorporated. Sponsor, Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and, around council members, at the October 4th council meeting, I presented on behalf of Laurel Creek an in-lug tax agreement for you to consider. Laurel Creek is a nonprofit corporation that's providing low-income housing for the elderly on Coral Road. You had some questions that I've looked into regarding the similarities or differences in this agreement as compared to the agreement we have the Cookeville Housing Authority. And those two agreements, the Cookeville Housing Authority agreement and the Laurel Creek agreement, they mirror one another. They're basically exactly the same. The in-lug tax agreement is based on 10% of the shelter rent. Shelter rent is considered to be the rents collected from the tenants, less the utilities paid by the housing agency for those tenants. paid by the housing agency for those tenants. The estimate for Laurel Creek that I show you there is $1,266. That's based on their 2006 financial statements. I reviewed those. One thing going forward, if you were to approve this agreement, it's similar to what we do with Cookeville Housing Authority, get those financial statements, review them, make sure those numbers seem accurate, and that calculation is, is based on those financial statements. I'll be happy to answer any other questions and that you might have about the agreement.
Do we have a motion and a second?
No approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion by the council?
If we're going to approve this, under this scenario, I would ask that there be some mechanism, an audit, not only of this, but of the other agreement that we have with the other group that's like this.
Cookeville Housing.
The Cookeville Housing. Is it audited now, or is it, is it shown to us what, what is paid?
Cookeville Housing Authority submits their audit to us. It's done by a separate audit.
So that, they do that?
And they submit it to us, and I review that, yes.
Okay, so will there be?
We do the same thing. I reviewed their 2006 audit, and I have that, I've looked at it.
That's part of the agreement.
And I've told them we will have to have that annually, to certify those numbers, and that's, that audit I will get annually from them, yes.
So can that, does that need to be a part of the agreement? Can that be in the wording of the agreement that they will provide that, or is it?
It, that is not in there. I assume we could ask them to include that in that agreement?
Would that be appropriate?
Sure. That's not a problem at all. I think they'd be obligated to anyway, but I think it would be better to spell it out.
Right, okay. So I would.
And the state statute allows them to do this. I mean, we're really, we just kind of have to, like you say, police it and audit it. But the state statute allows them to do in lieu of taxes.
Will that require an audit, or just a, you will make sure that gets done before? Or do we need to, an audit? Does that require an amendment?
I'll just approve the agreement with that, with an additional provision that they submit their annual audit in their books to Mr. Davidson for review.
All right.
Then should we amend the motion?
That's what I say.
I think so, yes.
So I make amendment that we add that they will submit an annual audit to Mr. Davidson, or within this agreement.
No, I'll second that motion.
I'll get a second. Now let's vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amended indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes, both motion carries.
Brings us back to the original motion as amended to require audit. Any further discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes, both motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
Thank you.
Item eight, consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for the, quote, "booger swamp" sewer evaluation sponsor, Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
You can flip the next one. Okay. Mayor and council, we're here seeking authorization to enter into a contract with Gresham Smith and Partners to evaluate the condition of the booger swamp trunk line sewer. The evaluation is necessary because prior, prior flow monitoring project that we did in that area indicated there were some restrictions in that line. This line was installed in the mid-'80s. We've not televised it or cleaned it since that time. This contract will put the bid documents together to clear the right-of-way, clean the line, televise each segment. After that has been accomplished, a report with recommendations will be provided to our department. It's set up on an hourly basis with a not to exceed $8,000.
Do you got that?
Yes, I'm, I'm assuming people know where Booger Swamp, we've talked about it enough. Dry Valley Road is down here, the pump station sits here, the Mullins Farm and the, what's commonly called the swamp, 111 Billbury Park subdivision. But we're going to be, this, this project will go from the back of Billbury Park under 111, down through the swamp, and all the way to the pump station. Allgood, we receive allgood sewer flows from, a, a, part of their flows from this, this portion right there. And during the flow monitoring, it's just, there's some restrictions there, and we need to find out what's going on.
Do we have a motion and a second?
No approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion by the council.
One of the questions we had in work session on Monday was about the, about just, is this kind of similar like a water tank? You need to get somebody to write a proposal, or is it?
Yeah, we do, we do a lot of this ourselves. We do it in town, small lines. This is a big line through a wetland and got some special conditions in it. We felt like we needed to get a company in to help put this together for us because there are some potential issues there. We've talked to a local company that does the work, that can bid on the project. I've had him out there and looked at it, and give us some rough prices about what we thought it would cost. So once we get it put together, we'd, hopefully they'll submit a bid for it.
Are we concerned about any infiltration here? Is that part of the reason why we're looking at it? I mean, because I know it's not been swampy this year, but.
Well, I mean, that's what we will determine if there is, if we can tell if there's any of that's going on. Something's restricting flow, whether it's some grease coming in from Allgood or what. I mean, that's what this will tell us. We have a broke, breakdown.
You shouldn't speak poorly upon our neighbors.
I mean, it's just, they discharge a lot of their wastewater right there. We'd recommend approval.
I would say this contract, the scope of the work and the amount of the money is fixed, but there are some conditions in the contract that are still being negotiated so far as any dispute resolution and some indemnity and insurance language. And Mr. Kelly and I are working to straighten those out, but that's fairly routine. But the scope of the work and the amount of money is, is less than $8,000.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because I meant to do that. But I think it needs to be approval contingent upon, Mr. Rader is happy with the language in part of that contract. We just, God has got it back to him. The guy, the project manager I'm dealing with, he's at a conference in San Diego, so he shot it, but I've, I've sent it to him, he's sent it back to his legal department. So his attorneys want to look at it a little bit more. So I think the motion needs to be contingent upon, we resolve those legal issues.
Do we need to amend now?
Was it your motion?
It's my motion.
Do you want to?
I mean, can you, can we rewind and just?
No.
We have to amend now, don't we?
I don't know. I apologize.
Can I withdraw? She could withdraw the motion. I will withdraw the motion, and I will make that motion continued upon the appropriate language that needs to be in the contract.
She has to withdraw her second.
I did.
Okay.
I have. I will.
Thank you.
What did I say? What she said.
Make motion.
I move that we execute this contract continued upon the legal language being appropriate and satisfactory to, to this project and to the department head and to our legal counsel. Second.
Have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign.
Five yes, both motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. At this time, that concludes our new business portion of our meeting. I would like to take this opportunity to recognize our guests that we have with us again this week. They had a little bit more excitement maybe tonight. We have the Tennessee Tech, Dr. Earl Hutchinson's advanced reporting class with us again tonight, and we appreciate you all being here again. Hopefully gained some knowledge there. At this time, we also have a hearing of citizens and/or delegations. Feel free to come to the lectern and share with us your ideas or concerns or, or anything on your mind. For the city of Cookeville, we'll give you a platform of about three minutes. And we also open the floor for the council. Any comments from the audience? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
So move.